Good evening, it is 5:30. The May 20th, 2014 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the Clerk please call the room?
Alderman Edwards?
Here.
Alderman Simpson?
Here.
Alderman Turner?
Here.
Alderman Lusko?
Here.
Alderman Cammon?
Here.
Alderman Joe?
Here.
Alderman McMiniman?
Here.
Alderman Thailand?
Here.
Alderman Dove?
Here.
Alderman Griffin?
Here.
Mayor Houston?
Here.
Before we move into the zoning agenda, I've got a proclamation that I'd like to present. Two gentlemen are sitting here with gold around their neck. They have been in this chamber of commerce in full armor, although they come very peaceably One night we, or one afternoon, we did have members of their organization in here pounding on each other. I sometimes question the mental capability of someone who does that, but other than that, I have a proclamation that I read with really great pride for people of the City of Springfield, and that is, whereas the achievement of residents of the City of Springfield bring pride to the city as a whole, and whereas the USA Striking Eagles recently represented the United States at the 2014 International Medieval Combat Federation World Championship in Belmonte, Spain, and whereas the United States brought home the gold in the 16 versus 16, five versus five, three versus three, women's longsword, women's sword and shield, women's polearm, and men's polearm, and whereas Springfield residents Brad Shivey and Scott Flappier, is that?
Frappier.
Frappier, sorry, participated in the 16 versus 16 and five versus five competition. And whereas their excellence shown in Spain, well, I'm really having a hard time, brings pride and honor upon the City of Springfield and the State of Illinois. Now therefore, I J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2014, to be USA Striking Eagles Day in the City of Springfield in honor of all members of Team USA and their excellence in gold medals brought back to The physical endurance of what these gentlemen do and the training that they go through is really almost unbelievable. We can be very, very proud that we have two members of the team. We can be very proud that they have brought the entire team for training here to the City of Springfield, and you've brought pride to our community and our country. And if you guys would step forward, I'd like to present you a proclamation.
Mayor, City Council, Alderman, can't tell you how much I appreciate it, and for the team, this is the home of Team USA for the IMCF World Championship. This has been our home since 2011. The reason we come here is because we've always been welcomed with open arms. The restaurants, the business owners, the elected officials, and everyone in this city has made this home. I have people that were with me in Spain that competed for Team USA who told me that Springfield is their second home. So I accept this on behalf of the team with great pride and know that as we travel in Europe, when we go to these competitions, we talk to fighters from Russia, Poland, Denmark, Ukraine, Israel, and many of them talk about the videos of the display that we did right in the City Council. And they talk about it and they talk about Springfield. So we carry that with great pride and thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the zoning agenda, the first item on the agenda is docket number 2014-015 for property located at 1819 through 1831 South 11th Street. The petition has been withdrawn. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-018 for property located at Lot 4 of Springfield Technology Park. The petitioner is William J. Selinger, LLC. The present zoning classification is an I-1 county zoning. The petition for annexation into the city has been filed. The requested zoning relief is a variance of Section 155.040, I-1 light industrial district permit an I-2 heavy industrial district use, which is an above-ground fuel storage tank in an I-1 light industrial district, and varies Section 155.112 surfacing to have 48,000 square feet of parking and vehicle storage with a rock surface rather than a paved surface. The Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is to approve the petition as submitted. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission and approve the petition as presented. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-020 for property located at 1704 Sammon Avenue. The petitioner is Sam Marconi. The present zoning classification is an S-2 community shopping and office district, Section 155.031. The requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.031, conditional permitted uses in S-2 community shopping and office district, and Section 155.200 taverns and microbreweries and a variance of Section 155.200 taverns within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot. The amended Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the conditional permitted use to operate a tavern, providing there is no outside seating, no live music, and provided that the business has greater than the majority of its revenues from sources other than the sale of alcohol, and approval of the variance to operate a tavern within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot. Evidence regarding the method of operation was provided, and staff finds there is an adequate barrier between the residences and proposed tavern to mitigate any negative impact on the surrounding area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approval of the amended staff recommendation. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve and accept the staff and planning zoning recommendations.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve the amended staff recommendation. Discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Is this one of these businesses that intends to put in a video? Well, first of all, this, if we grant this zoning relief, is the liquor commissioner here?
I am the liquor commissioner.
Not the commissioner, I mean, okay, well, maybe you can answer the question. If we grant this zoning relief today, then is there any way that this particular petitioner can get his liquor license prior to May 31st?
They would have to, you know, go through the process.
Okay, which means that they couldn't get it before May 31st.
It's unlikely, because apparently they've just extremely recently filed paperwork and the liquor commission isn't going to meet the rest of this month. And the council wouldn't be able to create a liquor license unless it had a special meeting.
Right, because we're not scheduled to meet again until June. So this, is Mr. McLaughlin here?
Yes, I'm here.
This petition for zoning relief, was this submitted before the City Council passed the ordinance putting the restriction on video gaming?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And do you know whether the intention of the petitioner here was to create a video gaming facility similar to the Lucy's Places?
That is correct.
That's correct.
That's petition stated.
Okay, so really, if we pass this, we're, unless we grant some relief from that, what we passed, the restriction, we're really effectively giving this guy nothing, is that correct?
He can operate a liquor license with a gaming license for up to one year, and then he'd have to prove what the percentages of his income are to meet the ordinance that was passed last time.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion? There are no further discussions. Excuse me.
Just by way of information, this petition is from Mr. Sam Marconi, and this petition, like the next four, are also from Mr. Marconi, Chatham resident, and what we learned from a prior council meeting is that Chatham has already passed an ordinance that places limits on video gaming of the kind that we placed pursuant to the ordinance that was sponsored by Alderman Jobe and Alderman Edwards, and I'll be voting no on this ordinance.
Further discussion?
Yes, please. So these five, just to lump the discussion on to one here, these are the gentlemen who was in here before, when we were having the discussion on that ordinance that passed. And I guess my point is, is that if we pass these zonings and he's unable to do the video gaming, what does that, does that just allow, I guess, explain to me what other ramifications this rezoning could have, since they won't be able to use it for the intended business that they were planning for?
If I could answer that?
Yes, please.
He's not rezoning the properties, he's asking for a conditional permitted use for alcohol and a variance for within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot.
So they could, now, does that then, does that variance then allow them to, obviously, number one, they would be able to have a bar or something along those lines, but does it also allow for a restaurant, or does it allow for a packaged liquor?
A packaged liquor would have to come before council for another conditional permitted use. Restaurants legal in all these districts.
Okay, that was my main concern, was that we were going to be creating a situation where a business that we may not want to put in there was coming in piggybacking off the variance, so.
And the variance would be for this particular site, which is a relatively small location, not multiple sites on that same building.
That is correct.
Further discussion?
A question from Mr. McLaughlin. If we grant this, could the owner, if he wanted to sell this, or, I don't know if he's buying, if he owns this or if he's leasing this property, but would somebody else using, if he transferred the property to somebody else, would that other person have the benefit of this CPU if we enacted?
The zoning runs with the property.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? There are no further discussions. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion fails. Three voting yes, six voting no, one voting present. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-021 for property located at 242 South Dirksen Parkway. Petitioner is Sam Marconi. The present zoning classification is a B-1 highway business service district, Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in B-1 highway business service district taverns and microbreweries. The amended Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the conditional permitted use to operate a tavern, providing there's no outside seating, no live music, and provided that the business has greater than the majority of its revenue from sources other than the sale of alcohol. Evidence regarding the hours and method of operation was provided, and staff finds that there is an adequate barrier and there will be no negative impact on the surrounding area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approval of the amended staff recommendation. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
It's been moved and seconded to deny. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, we have a motion to deny the petition. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor vote yes, those opposed vote no. Motion passes 9-1. Motion to reject the zoning. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-022 for property located at 3109 Atlanta Street. The petitioner is Sam Marconi. The present zoning classification is a B-1 highway business service district, Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in B-1 highway business service district taverns and microbreweries. The amended Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the conditional permitted use to operate a tavern, providing there's no outside seating, no live music, and provided that the business has greater than the majority of its revenue from sources other than the sale of alcohol. Evidence regarding hours and method of operation was provided, and staff finds that there is an adequate barrier and that there will be no negative impact on the surrounding area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approval of the amended staff recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the planning and zoning recommendation?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, which is approval of the amended staff recommendation. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve vote yes, those opposed vote no. Motion fails. Three voting yes, six voting no, one voting present. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-023 for property located at 4343 Conestoga Drive. The petitioner is Sam Marconi. The present zoning classification is a B-1 highway business service district, Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in B-1 highway business service district taverns and microbreweries. The amended Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the conditional permitted use to operate a tavern, providing there's no outside seating, no live music, and provided that the business has greater than the majority of its revenues from sources other than the sale of alcohol. Evidence regarding hours and method of operation was provided, and staff finds that there is an adequate barrier and there will be no negative impact on the surrounding area. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approval of the amended staff recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission's recommendation?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is to approve the amended staff recommendation. Discussion?
Yes, this one and all the ones that we've turned down along, you know, from Mr. Marconi, I think it's wrong what we're doing, because Mr. Marconi had his application, and before we changed the law, before we changed the video gaming law, and he was relying on the laws that existed when he filed his application, and based on when he filed his zoning application or petition for zoning relief, even if he gets the zoning relief, he's not going to get his liquor license before the May 31st deadline. I think, you know, people who were in the pipeline at the time the legislation was being considered should be grandfathered in. I think it's not fair to citizens to change the rules in the middle of the game. People who, you know, who applied or got started after the ordinance passed, that's another story, but I realize where the council's going, but I don't think it's the right way to treat our citizens.
Alderman Turner?
Just for the record, I want Alderman Cammon to know that the reason why I oppose the one in Ward 3 had absolutely nothing to do with the ordinance that was passed. It had more to do with the location and other things that are in that area, and the fact that there's already a video gaming almost right next door to that location.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Turner.
Further discussion?
I stand corrected with regard to the one in Ward 3.
Alderman Thailand?
The problem here is that he won't be able to get the liquor license, and when we passed the other, he could have come to the mayor's office and attempted to try to get the liquor licenses on for emergency passage this evening, and still come in under the wire and made the finish line, because we pushed the date back because of other people who were in the pipeline, as you said. And I don't know that any effort's been made, and I don't even see that he's here this evening, Sam.
Alderman Griffin?
Actually, maybe I'm mistaken, but this just says we cannot renew it after the first year. If Mr. Marconi wants to operate this business, which is out by Myers in the middle of nowhere, he could operate this business for a year, and then in that year, if he wished to sell this business to someone else in his family, they could apply for a liquor license and do a year and continue down the road. That was one of the things we needed to fix on that. But am I correct? He can do this, he can open this, and he can operate it for a year before anything will come into question.
That's correct.
Mayor, as to Alderman Thailand's point, I did ask Todd Oliver about that, and he told me that he doesn't accept, if you're not zoned properly for the sale of alcohol, he won't accept an application for a liquor license until you get your zoning approved. So assuming we would approve his zoning tonight, he wouldn't be able to apply for a liquor license until tomorrow. So I don't think that would have been possible, what you described.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to point out to Alderman Cammon that this council had a discussion on April 15, that we are changing course, that we denied a zoning request on packaged liquor, and the zoning commission hearing on all five of these took place the next day. So there was a type of notice that this council gave to the world that we are reevaluating our position.
We always noticed that it was possible, but we didn't change the law until our last council meeting two weeks ago.
Further discussion? There are no further discussions. All those in favor of the motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve the amended staff recommendation, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion fails. Four, five, with one voting present. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-024 for property located at 2427 Adley Stevenson Drive. The petitioner is Sam Marconi. The present zoning classification is a B-1 highway business service district, Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in B-1 highway business service district, and Section 155.200 taverns and microbreweries and a variance of Section 155.200 taverns within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot. The amended Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the conditional permitted use to operate a tavern, providing there is no outside seating, no live music, and provided that the business has greater than the majority of its revenue from sources other than the sale of alcohol, and approval of the variance to operate a tavern within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot. Evidence regarding hours and method of operation was provided, and staff finds that there is an adequate barrier and there will be no negative impact on the surrounding area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is to deny the petition. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to deny the petition.
Second.
The petition has submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and deny the petition. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The final item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-026 for property located at 3535 Mayflower Boulevard. The petitioner is Land Resource Development Group, Incorporated. The present zoning classification is an I-1 light industrial district, Section 155.040. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to a B-1 highway business service district, Section 155.033. The amended Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval based on the testimony presented by the petitioner that there was an error in the petition in that the maximum capacity would be 125 people. Staff has concerns, the number of parking spaces may not be adequate, but based on the petitioner's commitment to attempt to work with the neighboring properties to handle traffic overflow, recommended approval of petition so that it can go forward. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approval of the amended staff recommendation. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the Springfield-Sammon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation to allow it, based upon the goodwill that the people have done out there, Bacardis and the way they've worked with others. I hope they will continue to do so, that this 41 parking spots will not end up being a problem.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the amended staff recommendation. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The Chair recognizes Treasurer Langfelder for presentation of a financial report.
Thank you, Mayor. The corporate fund monthly cash report for the month of April, we had a beginning balance of $6,601,041. Receipts for the month totaled $6,594,549. Disbursements for the month of April totaled $7,637,865. So our ending cash balance in the corporate fund at the end of April totaled $5,557,725.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report?
No approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries. We do have some guests in the audience, and that we have a couple of Boy Scouts from Boy Scout Troop 3031 who are here attending the City Council meeting as part of their merit badge requirements. I have, I see three young men. I have two names. One is Noah Augie and Jacob Cody, and there's a third.
I'm Noah.
Okay, well, welcome in. We appreciate you joining us this evening. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with reading of the minutes of the May 6, 2014 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion, Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I'd like to be recorded a no on two ordinances that are on the consent agenda. That'd be no for 2014-184 and 2014-185. Those are both liquor licenses for gaming partners. Thank you.
No further. Alderman Simpson?
Madam Clerk, I also would like to be voted as present on those same two.
Further discussion? There are no further discussions. Alderman Dove?
Also, 184, 185, no, and 206, no, please.
Further discussion? There are no further discussions. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. Agenda numbers 2012-123, 2012-376, 2013-174, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2014-024, and 2014-085 remain table or in committee. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-022, an ordinance approving automatic districts pursuant to the 2010 National Decennial Census. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-022 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for passage. We have had one person who signed up to speak to the City Council on this ordinance, Teresa Haley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The Springfield branch of the NAACP is opposed. Can you hear me?
Ms. Haley, if you just state your name and address for the record.
Teresa Haley, 2532 Portsmouth Circle, Springfield, Illinois.
Thank you.
President of the Springfield branch NAACP. We would like to go on record saying that we are opposed to the ward map and want to make sure that we state this, because we are in agreement with the lawsuit that was filed in 1985, which was filed for minority representation. Both drafts split too many precincts. The split to accommodate, it appears, a certain alderman or aldermen's, and we have a concern there. We believe that there is not enough, not in the best interest of the minority community, or it's not just necessary at all. Why are you splitting several precincts is what we'd like to know. Ward 3 will pick up more minorities, and Ward 2 will lose more minorities. We see a concern with that. Anything below 60% can result in a possible lawsuit by the NAACP. Records reflect that over 60% was done in the first ward map. We are asking you to delay the vote, even though you've already taken the vote, once again to look at the possible results. We are afraid that the North End, based on the 2010 census and Ward 3, is currently an influence ward, and we have a concern there. What extreme cases are there to split the current precincts? Please answer those questions. What desire result are you trying to obtain or gain by decreasing Ward 2's minority percentage and increasing Ward 3's minority percentage? How will this be favorable for reelection? How will this be favorable for reelection of minorities in both wards?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Ms. Haley, you said something about minority influence ward, that you, I thought I heard you say that you, something to the effect that that was not a good idea, did I misunderstand?
We are understanding that Ward three was more or less a minority influence ward. Ward two stands at 62 to 65%, and with both of these drafts, we see that decreasing, and we have a concern there.
Okay.
And that's why we filed the lawsuit in 1985 to ensure that.
You don't have any objection to having a minority influence ward?
Oh, absolutely not.
All right. Okay. Alderman Simpson, then, Alderman Jove.
Just a point of clarification, somebody needs to tell me which map we're voting on. Are we voting on the map that allows for 60% minority?
The map that this ordinance covers, unless it is amended, is the original map that was presented.
That was presented, puts 60% to Ward two, 60-point-something percent to Ward two.
And that is still a decrease, correct?
No, it's a 1% increase from the last map, which was 59%. Is that correct?
The last draft?
Yeah, well, no, not the draft.
The last map, okay.
The one that we're operating on the right now is 59%.
Okay.
The one that was redrawn would be 60.12%, 60.4%.
60.4. Stats have gotten poor.
Right, and that's the one that I'm...
We don't have a problem with that, as long as it stays over 60%. If it goes under 60%, we have a concern.
Okay, so that's the one that we're currently voting on.
That's the one that is on the floor right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that we all understand that the current map, Ward two, which is the majority African-American ward, is at 59% today, and has been, and it was voted on 10 years ago by the city council, is that correct?
I'm going off the top of my head, because I have the numbers right, but I believe that the numbers were 58-point-something, and if you'd round it, it would round to 59.
When it was passed August 21, 2002, Ward two was 59.4%.
Okay, thank you. Alderman.
Yeah, Mayor, what I would like to know is, there has been a lot of discussion about the splitting of precincts, and whether or not that was legal, and whether or not it was in the consent decree that the precincts could be split. Can I get the definitive answer tonight of whether that is true, or whether that's false, whether it's legal, or whether it's not?
The previous map had split.
Excuse me, but I'm asking staff.
Yeah, the consent decree and what's in the city code basically tracks state law, which states that one of the goals you have is that insofar as possible or practicable, you don't split precincts, but it is permitted under both the consent decree and under state law to split precincts. But in, under both the consent decree and state law, precincts are the desired building blocks in drawing wards.
Okay, so basically, they're desired from, to stay together to not be split, but you can split them.
Correct.
And are we voting, again, to do something that we can do? Do you understand what I mean?
Yes, my understanding is that the ward map is originally proposed by the committee, meets the requirements of the consent decree and state law.
Mayor.
I understand what you're saying, that it does, it does meet, but are we changing something? Are we splitting more than what normally the state would request for us to split? Should we not be splitting these precincts the way that we are? We're doing it in a, in an excessive manner.
And that is more of a policy issue as far as what the reasons are as to why you're proposing to split precincts. Is it, you know, to preserve neighborhoods, is it some other reason? And that, I was not part of that discussion when the map was prepared.
So who would have that information?
I would defer to Alderman Edwards or anybody else who has that knowledge, as far as the reasons why precincts were split.
On the initial map?
Yes.
I would make the assumption that what they were attempting to do was to balance out the number of people within the 10 wards, and generally speaking, as you look at this incorporation council, and correct me if I'm wrong, you try to stay within 5% under or 5% over, and at least it's my understanding that would be the reason that you would attempt to split precincts in order to balance out the numbers.
Yeah, and that's something that's been talked about, and it's public. You can go anyplace on ward redistricting on the internet and find it. If you get more than a total disparity of 10%, in other words, 5% over and 5% under from what the ideal population should be, the Supreme Court has said several times that they will treat that as a prima facie case of invidious discrimination against the one-man-one-vote principle. And then it becomes the burden of what everybody adopted that map to show that there were very, very good reasons for more than a 10% total disparity.
Right, so this map in this form, then you're saying that we won't be sued forever?
Well, I think it would be hard for us to be successfully sued. I mean, we can always be sued.
We can sue you.
But my understanding here is that we're less than a 10% total disparity under the map as originally proposed, and we're very, very close to the 60% in Ward two.
Okay, we talk about transparency, and I just want to make sure that as we move ahead with this and with this map, that we're being absolutely transparent to the public out there. I just don't want something to come up later where they say, where we find something and it was a mistake, and we make absolutely sure we're correct in moving forward with this form.
Are you splitting any of the other wards, like you're doing two and three?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I believe that there's 102 precincts, and I think of the 102, only four have been split, so it's...
On the initial.
On what's before, that's right.
There's an amendment coming that I don't know anything about, like what all's on it. That'd be a separate question, and you might have to wait for the amendment.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I, with regard, well, I know each precincts do not, are not of equal population, so as Corporation Council said, sometimes you, in order to keep that disparity from going over or under 5%, you may need to split a precinct. Also, I know that in the amended map, there was a request from people in the neighborhood in my ward, Ennis Park, to keep it more together, and that resulted in the amended map and certain precinct being, or one precinct being split.
Further discussion? Alderman Turner?
I've been waving my hand for a minute, but I think that there are several things that happened between this map and the previous map, and I think that, how do I want to say this? I think that one thing, the whole process starts from the premise that a map is just drawn without regard to anything other than putting something in a computer and then spinning something out. And I think that the only caveat that was given to the map drawers was the fact that all of the aldermen would not, no alderman would be put in a district with another alderman, and that Ward two would remain predominantly minority ward, minority ward. I think that was in, and it was just popped in there and popped out, which, I don't know, is a great way to do that. I think that you should always have some kind of human element involved in that, and then, and then we don't end up with where we are now, with something that's plopped out of a machine, and then you're trying to insert the human element after the fact. From, between the time that the first map, the previous map was drawn and this one, there have been several changes that the election commission has made with regard to precincts, precinct configuration, which changed a lot of what you saw with those numbers. So in order to try to keep the specific number of individuals within the wards, that results in some precincts, that would result in some precinct splitting. And then to try to maintain the same integrity of the wards that you had in the, with the previous map, that incurred some precinct splitting. So it's, it's all about trying to add that human element on the back end instead of on the front end.
Mayor, I might also point out that the county, the election office redrew the precinct lines after the 2010 census, so...
That's what I just said.
Pardon?
That's what I just said.
Yeah, okay. And the, now, Mr. Greenberg, is it correct that what we're voting on right now is the original map?
What, the motion, the motion and the second is to place the original map that was presented to the city council on passage.
Okay, and so if a majority votes yes, then the original map will be the map, the ward map.
That's correct.
I'm going to make a motion to amend, to use the amended map, and the reason, the reason I make the motion...
Identify as draft two.
Draft two. The reason I make the motion is simply because...
Okay, but we have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance to adopt exhibit two.
Draft two.
Draft two.
And just speaking in favor of the motion, I made, I made the motion because I have requests from some of my constituents in my ward in the Ennis Park neighborhood to keep that neighborhood together. The original map split it up, and I would prefer, my preference would be to have a ward that was 60, an 60% or greater minority population, if we could do that and keep the neighborhood, the people from, in the Ennis Park neighborhood in one ward. So if we could do that, I'm certainly in favor of it, but I have to represent the people in my ward, and this is what they want, and I do believe that even if it's, if the majority minority ward is slightly under 60%, that still legally passes muster.
Alderman Lesko.
So now with this version, number two, how many precincts are split in version two?
Three.
Three?
Three additional.
Three additional.
So you have a total of seven?
Seven total.
I believe it'd be seven total, like, don't hold me to that.
Alderman Simpson?
I said it once, I'm going to say it again, I am not in favor, and I don't believe this council should vote in favor of any map that decreases the percentage to 57.89%. And now, you know, the reason we got here in the first place was because we had commissioners sitting up here making decisions that weren't representative of the African-American community. Now, we've got another body that wants to sit here and make decisions and say, oh, well, you know, if the percentage falls a little bit below, it's okay. Well, that's okay, because you're the majority. It's not okay that African-Americans don't represent at least 60% of the population in terms of a ward. That is the draft that was sent, the original draft that was sent. I don't understand why we would even subject ourselves to a lawsuit, and we know we don't have to.
Further discussion?
Yes, with all due respect, Alderman Simpson, I've questioned this, a council 10 years ago, and I understand completely where we're at today and the equal and fair representation, but I'm trying to figure out, and I was just asking Corporation Council, where did 60% come from, because the city council 10 years ago didn't pass a map with 60%. The decree says majority, correct?
Yeah, the, in the findings of fact...
And we didn't pass that map with 60% 10 years ago.
In the findings of fact, the district court accepted a map which had a 59.5% African-American population, but I looked several times, and it is not in the consent decree that says there must be, under the terms of the consent decree, a 60% African-American population. However, you know, one of the results of the consent decree was that, or excuse me, the findings of fact of the original voting rights lawsuit was that there was an African-American population in Springfield that was large enough and compact enough to constitute a majority in a single-member district, that that group was politically cohesive, and that under the circumstances that existed in 1985 of an at-large voting system, that the majority group was able to defeat the minority group's preferred candidate. So those are the things that led to the finding in 1987 by the district court that the at-large voting system discriminated against African-Americans. The 60% black population in one ward was, was a separate issue. It found that by drawing the lines that way, there would be a ward that was majority African-American. However, that is not specifically part of the consent decree, that there always has to be a 60% African-American population ward.
Mayor, but does it say anything about not decreasing the percentage in the minority ward, in the minority ward?
Well, that's...
I understand it doesn't say 60%, but we are going down.
That becomes a question of, you know, whether the city would be found to, by diluting the African-American population in a ward, that would be an issue for a future court to address, as to whether or not that's, that's any evidence of intent to discriminate. The short answer is I can't promise you, one way or the other, what a court would do with the legal significance of going below 59%.
Thank you. Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I said this last time, and I, I think it holds true. As we erode the number, it gets easier and easier and easier, and I understand, last time it was 59, this time it's 60, and then it's, we want to drop it to 57. Every time you do that, every time we say no, every time we say yes, every time we change the number, it gets easier and easier. I think when Todd and I talked about this, it was more or less a gentleman's agreement that they try and keep that number around 60, and I think it's imperative that we do that. Now, with me saying that, and Teresa and I had this discussion, it gets tougher and tougher every year to do that, because, thank God, we're becoming segregated, people are moving freely through our community and living where they want, and that becomes tougher and tougher. And it's going to be a challenge to continue to do that, but when we can do it, we ought to do it, and that's just the way I feel about it.
Mr. Mayor, again, we do have a problem.
Wait. Alderman. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to vote no for this amendment, but it has nothing to do with minority representation. I think we've got strong minority representation when you look around this horseshoe, and I, I think it'll remain that way, but I'm concerned about changes being made to meet individual aldermen likes, or to avoid some dislikes as far as how their particular ward is drawn. I think six of the four of us by this amendment go unaffected. I think it's dangerous to go down that path when you try to carve out your ward for personal preferences. I think we've tried to avoid that, and I think it's a mistake to open the door to that this time or any time, and so I think we're better off just to take, you know, take the cards we were dealt by the county, and live with them, and as Alderman Edwards said a couple of meetings ago, you run on your ward and you do the best you can, and not try to improve the boundaries or avoid a problem section of your, of your ward. So that's the rationale for my voting this way.
Mayor. Alderman Kamen?
Just in response, I agree, it would, it's not right to propose changes for an alderman's personal preference, but each alderman represents the people who live in their ward. We represent our constituents, and that's our job to represent our constituents, and if our constituents want us to propose certain changes to keep a neighborhood together or something of that nature, then, and we feel it's reasonable, and then to do our job representing our constituents, we have to propose changes. This is a political, drawing a map is a political process, it's not, yeah, you could put it through a machine, but it is subject, at least the way the law is now, it's subject to the vote of the city council. We don't have a law that says pump it into a computer and whatever comes out, that's the map. If you want to change a lot of that, then you could propose an ordinance to that effect, but that's not the way the law is right now. It's our responsibility, it's in our hands, and we have an obligation to represent our constituents and do what's in the best interest of our constituents and the entire city.
Alderman Lesko.
Mayor, I'm going to vote...
Mayor, I'm going to vote no on this amendment. I just don't believe that in a minority ward that we should be taking the numbers down, that the numbers should be decreasing. You know, there's a chance that, you know, in several of the wards, there's an opportunity for their numbers to increase over the next few years. Depending upon what the opportunities are in Ward Two, those numbers could even decrease more and would be more of a deficit from the 60 percent. So I'm not going to support this amendment.
Alderman Simpson?
You know, it's a shame that in 2014, we sit here and are fighting to try to make sure that we get at least one black representative on this body. That, to me, is appalling in the city of Springfield in 2014. We should be making every effort not to decrease these numbers, but to make sure that at some point, maybe there'll be five and five, five African-Americans sitting on this body as opposed to just trying to make sure we keep only one. We, as the city of Springfield, need to do better. We don't need to move backwards. We don't need to placate any one or two aldermen. And Alderman, you know, sometimes we have to explain to our constituents why it's better or why we can't vote the way they think we do. Because they elected us to represent them and to make decisions. Sometimes we have to make decisions that go against them because they're better for the city of Springfield as a whole. I don't know that we can always vote the way that our constituents and our little, our wards think we ought to, because it's not always best for the city of Springfield.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, although in favor of the motion to amend to draft number two, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
Yeah, I know. We're having a glitch apparently with the visual.
Okay, four voting yes, six voting no. We now have the main motion. Is there further discussion on the main motion? Hearing no further discussion on the main motion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Okay, motion passes nine one. The next item on the agenda is 2014-26, An ordinance accepting and authorizing execution of contract UE 15-03-02, heavy equipment maintenance and repairs at Dahlman with Martin Equipment of Illinois Incorporated amount not to exceed $275,000 for the office of public utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-186 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes nine one. The next item on the agenda is 2014-202, An ordinance authorizes execution of an annexation agreement with Lee B. Shirock for the property located at 2506 Plateau Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council to hold a public hearing regarding 2014-202.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to address the council regarding the annexation agreement for property located at 2506 Plateau Drive? Hearing no one, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-202 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is 2014-203, An ordinance annexing certain described property to the city of Springfield owned by Lee B. Shirock and located at 2506 Plateau Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-203 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is Document Number 2014-204, An ordinance annexing certain described property, real property located at 4375 Peoria Road. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-204 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for final passage. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is Number 2014-207, An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Livingstone, Mueller, O'Brien, and Dabland, PC to defend workers' compensation claims for the city of Springfield from March 1, 2014 through February 28, 2015 for a total amount not to exceed $125,000. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-207 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion, Mayor. Mayor, I've got a floor amendment which is intended as a friendly amendment. Alderman, title and help me with the language on this. Basically, it asks the law firm that's been representing the city in the defense of workers' comp claims to give the city council a report summarizing the status of their representation for the most recent 12-month contract period and to offer recommendations to the city regarding how the city might take any steps to limit exposure to workers' comp claims and costs associated with those claims. I'll read in the record the formal language. I believe our city clerk has a copy of the language. It says, it adds a Section 1.1 to the ordinance which states that, quote, "That the city corporation council shall request that Livingston, Mueller, O'Brien, and Dabland, PC law firm, prepare a report regarding its representation in defense of city workers' compensation cases during the 12 months ending February 2014. The report shall include statistical information regarding the number of cases handled by the law firm and the status of such cases. The report shall also include any recommendations the law firm wishes to make regarding how the city might limit its exposure and its costs in the future regarding workers' compensation claims." And also that the city corporation council requests that the report be prepared within 90 days of passage of this ordinance and that the representatives of the law firm be available to Alderman who have questions after reviewing the report.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the floor amendment. Could I ask one question? In terms of doing this, if we could repair, prepare the report in-house and avoid the legal fees for them preparing the report and get their recommendations, would that work?
Saves money.
We should have all the records that rather than ask them to do it, which I'm sure they're going to charge us by the hour to do, we could probably prepare the list of cases and then just ask for their recommendations. I mean, is that, you don't have to change this, I'm just, if that would be acceptable, I mean, I'd take that approach and try to save a few dollars.
The language here isn't binding on the law firm, so it's binding on our city corporation council to make the request for the report. And if our city corporation council wishes to modify the form of the product, the work product, that's fine with me, Mayor.
Okay, further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor of the amendment, vote yes, or say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the, next we have the further discussion on the motion as amended. Hearing no further discussion?
Yes, I have a question to the Corporation Council. Originally, this ordinance was introduced under another number with, there were two law firms, and then we, now this is only the one law firm. I'm just wondering why, had we had the two law firms representing us before? Workers? No, we were proposing a new law firm to be the second law firm. This law firm was out of town. We thought on further reflection that perhaps we would canvas the law firms in Springfield who do workers' compensation work and propose a second law firm from the Springfield area to do that work. Okay, well, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is Number 2014-208, A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and submit to the Illinois Housing Development Authority, conditional commitment letter, APP-50895, for assistance in the amount of $75,000 for demolition of abandoned residential property under the abandoned residential property municipal relief program for emergency passage.
So moved.
It's moved, it's seconded. Moved and seconded for emergency passage. Discussion?
Mayor, just a question. I assume that in order for us to get the $75,000, you have to execute that document?
That's correct. In fact, it's waiting right there for my signature.
And this is the grant that comes from the fees that the plaintiffs who file mortgage foreclosure suits, the extra fee they had to save from state legislation.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 11-0. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend rules and place on first reading, Agenda Number 2014-225, An ordinance directing CWLP to prepare a feasibility report regarding the placement of electric vehicles charging stations.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business to come before the city council? Is there any new business to come before the city council? If not, I'd accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.